He's not required by law to do that. And Mr. Hamlin walks away when I ask the question.
I saw your last presentation, you gave them a five. Yeah, Randall's out. I believe that's Mr. Teague's here. I think they're playing games with their whole team, I think too.
I can have everybody's attention before we get started. Is Maureen Singer here?
No, she's not.
No, no.
Yeah, she's out of town on business.
How about Linda Baker? Linda? Why? Adrian Iyer?
I sure am.
Adrian's here. Jennifer O'Hare?
Can I ask why you want to know if I'm here?
Well, I'll explain it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I picked your names because you were on some of the letters that I received. And I want to commend you for the work you're doing. It takes a lot to get behind something like this. I'm talking to the four ladies.
But none of us can hear you, sir, could you use a microphone?
Don't have one. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, listen up. Ladies, I picked you because I want to apologize. I want to apologize for my rudeness, my unprofessional courtesies, my poor decisions. Some said I was hostile, ignorant to the people, and nobody's got confidence in me. Well, I want to apologize to the people, all of you, who wrote the letters, who's been in the meetings with us. And I apologize even though it's very difficult to run a meeting with 100 people who are a little anxious. And things got out of hand last month's meeting. I'm sorry for that. But I hope you'll accept my apology.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, of all those letters I received, which was one or two dozen, most of them were unsigned. One stands out to me. It was kind of a threat. The letter said that if I didn't resign, they were going to expose me to a lot of things that I did wrong as fire chief. That made me feel bad. I was fire chief for 18 years. And I had a lot of good years being fire chief. I think of one up here on Dunham Town Road. Little boy got hit by a car on his bicycle two miles from my house. My pager went off and I was there within a couple of minutes because my truck was right there by my side. I got up there and found this seven-year-old boy laying in a ditch six inches of water, face down in the water. I flapped him out of the ditch and he wasn't breathing. He drowned. I done a couple chest compressions onto him and he spit some water out and he started gagging. Then he quit breathing again. Two more of the medical response team showed up and they started CPR onto him and got him going again. The ambulance came and we took him to the hospital and on the way to the hospital, he quit breathing again. And they brought him back. And the trooper said to me, he says, "Now, somebody's going to have to go down and talk to his dad." His dad was a meat cutter, a great American. And the women that were supposed to be babysitting this boy, they didn't want nothing to do with it. So I said, "I'll go down and talk to them." So I went to Great American and I told the manager, who I knew, I said, "I need to talk to Mr. So-and-so, he's a meat cutter." So I called him on the intercom and the guy come out and he see me standing there in my uniform and he come right on a dead run. He says, "My God, what's the matter, my house on fire?" I said, "No, nothing like that at all." I said, "Your little boy was out on the street riding his bike and a car come along and bumped him. And he fell off the bike, skinned his knees." And the women there, they right away, they called ambulance. Ambulance came and if any of you people understand the ambulance, they won't go unless they take somebody they can't get paid. So they had to take him to hospital." I told this guy that. I said, "Now, your biggest problem is you're going to have to go down here and sign him out and bring him home." I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but they had to take him to hospital. About two hours later, this man called me. And he thanked me and he says, "If I only knew what really happened, I probably wouldn't have made it to the hospital." Six months later, after relocation, that little boy walked in the fire station where she ate cake and onto us says, "Thank you," fireman. That was one of my good days, one of my good calls. I had another one that lived in my park over here three doors away. I got a call that he was going out. I jumped my Bronco and went down there. And I went in there and he was sitting on a chair and he was going backwards and he was going out. I grabbed my oxygen, I put oxygen onto him so as I did, brought him around. He came around, got in the ambulance, went to hospital. And I got a call from the doctor, said, "If you hadn't have been there with the oxygen, he never would have made it." And some of you probably know who he was. He was the former mayor of Fort Dix. And that was about 22, 23 years ago. But anyway, I wanted to apologize, I wanted to tell you this little story. And I was 18 years fire chief, I designed this building. And I always thought it was a great building, it's been to a good use. Now, before we get started. Before we get started, I'd like to introduce the board. Brian, introduce yourself.
Brian Randall.
Brian Randall.
Ben and Roger's Road.
Jason?
Good evening, Jason Aurelio on Fenton Ave and Hill Press.
Tom?
Tom Sanders, Ben and Hack Road here in Cary, Forkton.
Engineer?
Rick Armstrong, 79, engineering representative for the town and also planning board member.
Louder, please. We can't hear, louder, please.
Okay.
My name is Rick Armstrong. I represent the engineering office and also a planning board member.
He's our engineer. And of course, everybody knows me, I'm John Eldredge, I'm the planning board chair. Thank you for your attention.
God bless our first responders, please, too.
You got Christina there, too.
I'll call the meeting to order. And the first thing on agenda is approval of the minutes. Everybody look for the minutes? Motion to adjourn by Tom?
I'll second it.
Brian, second it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven. Minutes approved, last minute, meeting. Okay, we have no old business. So we get right to new business. The new business is Fenton Trucking Terminals, NG Advantage at 65 West Service Road. Now, they brought in their permit application. And I'm going to have those present their permit application so you can all hear what they're doing. Valance Duran.
I'm Rico Biasetti, CEO of Bendy Advantage. Thank you, may I have a second? What we'd like to do here initially is to give a quick presentation of the company. I think you've already seen it a few times, but just go over it again to those that might not have. And then we'll get right into the permitting issues.
Rico?
Yes.
You've got to speak a lot louder.
All right. Vanessa? All right, I'll say it again, Rico Biasetti, CEO of Bendy Advantage. What we're going to do is we're going to give a quick presentation of the company so people have a better understanding of what it is that we're actually doing and what have we already completed at our 12 facilities. And then we'll get involved into the permitting process and what we plan on presenting to the board. At NG Advantage, for the foremost, we must provide our virtual pipeline services. Simply what we do is that we take natural gas and we deliver to customers that don't have access to a pipeline. All right, so we give access to people that don't have access to a pipeline, the ability to have natural gas. So far, we've delivered over 10 BCF, a billion cubic feet of gas in the section in 2013. Right now, we currently safely serve hospitals, schools, and a number of customers for very populated reasons as far as our customer base is concerned. We also serve a lot of CNG customer in the U.S. And that customer is upstate New York. They only take over one and a half BCF of gas per year by trailer into their site. And we'll get involved in this one here a little bit later. Without CNG, they'd be out of business along with about 1,800 jobs. We have a strong safety program in the industry. It's very, very, as you see as we go into this, but that's our first and primary concern. We also have a solid history of compliance about permitting and regulatory. We don't sample anything here for permitting and regulatory concerns involved. We also have a system that's designed to control the data systems with a fork. And we'll get involved here also a little bit later. But what that does is that monitor is not only our system, the customer system, and the number of folks that match them to that. You see here off to the right, you have our Milton facility. Just below, we have our Pembroke facility. What you'll notice with those facilities is that they look and act just like a regular gas station. It's just a fueling station, it's a trucking location. The transportation that we use is all state of the art, it's DOT approved. They're carbon fiber tanks on the inside. And what they do, they look and act just like a regular bulk tanker, regular tractor trailer using the same equipment, the same process, same length. Actually, limits charter at 40 feet, or 43 feet. People that use CNG, anybody can use CNG, anybody that doesn't have access to a pipeline. And so right now, current users of CNG that replaces fossil fuels are hospitals, universities. We have airports, located airports, first responders, taxis use CNG. We also have municipal transit systems, vehicle fleets, commercial buildings. Any industrial, commercial utility or vehicle that uses a fossil fuel can use this product. It's cheaper, it's environmentally safer, and it creates an economic benefit to the region and to the customers. The benefits of natural gas is reliable. Any one of our customers that we've switched from either coal, oil, or propane have not gone back to that fossil fuel even with the low prices of oil today. It's a much more reliable system, it's a cleaner system than what they're accustomed to using. It's clean for the environment and it's clean for the workers that use it. 25% of all our energy is natural gas in this country. It's affordable and it's domestic. So in fact, not only domestic, it's right here in New York, it's right here in Pennsylvania, it's here in West Virginia and Ohio. It's great cheap as far as transportation is concerned. We're not bringing this in from anywhere else. It's being produced locally and we're selling it locally. It's also very efficient as we discussed before. And the benefits is that as far as environmental benefits, which we'll also get involved in later, is that it's up to 56% less greenhouse gas emissions than coal, oil, fuel, or propane. And as we stated, you know, safety is number one for us. We have a safety officer on board that's all he does is focus on safety. One of the things that we do do is that when we go into a new community, you know, the first thing we do is we sit down with the first responders. And we get buy-in that it's okay with the first responders that this is something that they would want in their community. The next thing we do, after we locate a customer, Jay here will travel from our station to the customer site and meet every single first responder en route, every single town, every single county. And what that does is, is it prepares those communities in case there ever is an accident. So we put all that time and effort upfront to make sure that if there ever is a problem, that they're completely trained. And not only do we train them once, is that on an annual basis, we go back and we give them the option of retraining again or any new employees get to be trained the first time. And this is an annual event that we do, the annual, we bring in the trailers, we bring in the equipment, they get to see it firsthand and they know exactly what they're walking into if there ever is a problem. All of our equipment is certified. It's 49 CFR for CNG containers, DOT approved. And the two trailers that we use, we use a Hexagon trailer, we use a Plum trailer. And up here, you can see the codes, DOT 14951 and DOT 16524. You can go on the DOT website and see exactly how these two trailer manufacturers perform underneath their testing. So every single trailer is tested, every single trailer is certified to be used for this purpose. And not only is it certified the first time, but we go back and there's a recertification process for all of these trailers on a five-year basis. So every five years, these trailers are recertified as if they were brand new. And they're checked out by the independent inspectors come in and they run through all the tests. We have nothing to do with it, it's all on them. Same thing with all of our facilities and the equipment. Everything is tested by the National Fire Protection Association, NEFA 52 and 58. And so everything is checked and checked again for safety precautions. All facilities and equipment are approved by the State Division of Fire Safety. As we stated earlier, we work hand in hand with the first responders and the hazmat teams to make sure that there's no issues and no problems. And if they have any questions, they know they can come back and ask us. And all of our operators are also certified, and the handlers and the drivers. So they're all certified to handle this product, specifically this product. Safety inspections. Not only do we do what we have to do, the first bullet point here talks about how we had auditors come in. It was by the DOT and the FISA. And they came in and conducted a full, complete audit of our system. So they looked at every log book, they looked at every system, they checked every valve. We went through our station in Milton and they went through the trailers. Unannounced, here they are, we're going to run and we're going to conduct this audit. So we're tested in that manner. The second way which we're tested is that we do voluntary audits on an annual basis. We call in OSHA and we call in DOT. And we do that on our own. And we have them come in and look at our system to make sure that everything we're doing is proper and safe. And you know, I wonder how many other businesses call in OSHA to walk into their manufacturing facility and say, "Hey, check me out. Am I doing this correctly?" Not me, OSHA's not pleasant. But it's something that we do and something that we encourage to do just to make sure that we're doing everything properly. And one of the things that makes us very different from anybody else that's in the industry is our SCADA system. Basically, what the SCADA system is, it's our control center. So we have a 24/7 desk, 365, located in Milton. That facility monitors all of our stations. So every station is being monitored from Milton on a 24-hour basis by a crew of individuals. And what they monitor are the stations themselves and they monitoring for pressures, temperatures, flows. We also have a historian in there so we can track over periods of time based upon certain conditions so we know exactly how that station should work. We also have that same system located at every one of our customer sites. So we can monitor every single customer site. We can monitor the flow rates, we can monitor the temperatures, we can monitor the equipment. And one of the benefits that we have here is that with a historian aspect is that we're able to monitor the flow rates and temperatures until we can see the slightest differential. We'll understand that maybe a regulator needs to be repaired or maybe the seat of a valve or the valve that's off. And it's before there's ever a problem. And so because of that, our customer base has a 99.96% uptime of all of their equipment. And that's because we monitor it on a 24/7, 365 basis. And it all starts with the SCADA system. So we have access to it, all of our customers have access to it. And we also give first responders access to it because it also has video cameras. There again, safety. So if there ever is a problem, and we have a problem at any customer site or our own site, the first responders in that area can log on and see firsthand exactly what's happened. So they know exactly what they're going to need to, if anything at all. And it's all part of safety, it's all precaution. We'll talk specifically here about the Fenton facility. And the facility that we're putting in, the environmental benefits. And as I stated before, what we do is we replace coal, oil, and natural, coal, oil, and propane. Anybody that doesn't have an access to a natural gas pipeline, we can replace. So industrial facilities, commercial facilities, utilities. And we supply all of that. This one facility alone that we're building here will create 870 million pounds of CO2 reductions. That's the same as removing 83,392 cars off the road every single year. And that number is an annual basis, 870 million pounds annually. And so what we're doing, we're replacing other fossil fuels that are more harmful to the environment. SO2, nice ingredient for acid rain. We remove 11 million pounds of SO2 on an annual basis. And what that means is, is that we displace 158 million gallons of fuel oil annually just out of this one facility. And that otherwise be used at industrial, commercial, or utilities. Right now, we have existing New York, upstate New York customers, all right? And those customers have already received a reduction of CO2 by 118 million pounds, are equivalent to 128,000, I'm sorry, 128 million, 160,000, 387 miles driven by a car annually. That's how much our New York customers have already saved, or reduced with the environment. We've also reduced SO2 by nearly 2.9 million pounds. And we've already displaced over 20 million gallons of number six fuel oil. And for those that don't know, number six fuel oil is a pretty nasty product. It's right next to the bottom of the barrel. It's a very heavy product and it's a very high pollutant product. The other thing what we do as far as the community is concerned is what we bring to the community. And before I get into this side, I want to say, we practice what we preach, all right? Is that not only are the jobs local and we sell the product locally to local, to local industry, but we buy American-made. Our equipment is designed, engineered, manufactured in the USA. It's not overseas. We could have bought it from China, we could have bought it from a number of different locations and paid a lot less. But we didn't. It's all American-made. We can't promise it might be an electronic component or two in there from China or Taiwan or somewhere. But everything is here, it's made in the U.S. And we make it locally for a couple of reasons. One, we practice what we preach. Two, and if we can't get the jobs to Americans, who the hell are we going to give them to, all right? Number two is that who else makes a better product than us in this country? Maybe the Germans, hell of an engineering group. But you know, maybe the Germans, other than that, who else can produce a better product than us? That's safer and reliable. Third, and this one's selfish on our part, is that when we have a problem and we need a pot, it's there. There are reps local and they can place it in, they can bring that spare pot in, they can carry our inventory for us, we get to reduce our costs a little bit, and they have service available for us. So I want to say that first. Second, construction. The one thing we did, and it can be tested based on everything that I've seen here, is that when we go into a community, we only use local. We use local engineering, we use local firms, local construction. And when I say local, I mean very local, right? We're not looking at bringing somebody in from Buffalo, right? We're bringing people in from greater Binghamton. And those are the people that we're using to build this facility, design this facility, move the dirt, weld the pipes, run the copper for the electrical. It's all local and it's one thing that we believe in. It's 100 jobs and it's $8 million to a local economy. The other thing we do is that the, on day one, when we build this facility, the sales tax alone is $1.76 million that goes straight to the county. And the county that had a $250,000 balance just several months ago should appreciate the $1.76 million. Operations, 150 new full-time jobs. Combination of folks, we're talking drivers, we're talking operators, we're talking maintenance, accountants, sales folks, a number of different positions. And you can go on the website and see all the jobs which we're hiring. But again, they're all staying here locally. That's where our product is. $10 million in annual local payroll and benefits, and that's with our customers. We offer full, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield, we have dental, we have matching 401Ks. And so we give back to our employees also. $342,000 in payroll tax. The annual fuel tax alone is $337,000. And the property tax, we still have to figure out, and we're estimating at about $75,000. It may, we have to talk to the town about what that should be and what the numbers are based on the plant's build. Economic growth here. You know, one thing to remember is that our product competes only on price, period. If we can't beat our competitor, fuel oil, coal oil, we don't sell the product. So we can't travel very far. 200 miles is about top for our product to ship. After that, the local fuel will take us every time. But what we can do is that we can, for those customers within 200 miles, we know for a fact that we can reduce their price by 25 to 40% for fuel. Now, fuel is typically one of the largest costs these customers have. These large industrial facilities, these large paper plants, these manufacturing facilities, equipment manufacturers, it's one of their largest costs. And if we could save a customer 40%, which we did for a particular paper company, you know, they were able to put $3 billion and change right back into their company, and they used that to expand. They wouldn't have had that opportunity if they didn't have access to the CNG. And we know for a fact that without this product in the state of New York, two of our customers would not have survived. And one of them had 1,800 employees, and they would have lost them all. And it was that close, they were on six oil, and they had a choice. Either find a replacement for six oil, number six residual fuel oil, or go out of business. And we were able to bring this in. And so it saved that manufacturing facility, and it saved those 1,800 jobs. And without this, that whole community would have been hurt. And when that hurts, it hurts everybody, that gets trickled down. And not just in that community, but all the communities around them. And we were able to reduce it, we already talked about this. But the reinvestment back into these facilities, it all stays here. We're not gonna put it in, it's not like a pipeline. And the pipeline, we put it, you put it in the pipe, and that gas is gone, right? You're not gonna see it here, it's not gonna be in your homes. It's gonna be in Philadelphia, it's gonna be in New York City, it's gonna be in Boston, it's gonna be at the highest price that they can move it on the pipe. Our product comes from the area and stays in the area. One thing here, I'll point out, and I'm gonna hand this over to Jerry here, I'll see you all. There's some safety features, internal safety features. Actually, I will let Jerry pick it up as he hit his point here, he's better at it than I am. I want to thank everybody for coming, I think democracy is great. And if anybody wants to see the plant firsthand, you're welcome. You know, we had some bus trips earlier. If there's enough interest, we'll have them again, and you can see the plant firsthand to know what we are and what we aren't. Thank you.
I'm the director Jerry Myers on the COO of NG Advantage. I've been here on a few occasions, which we'll talk about a little bit later. Primarily, one of the biggest things that's come since our early presentations that started last January was safety. This is just a list of equipment and the fact that we have no onsite storage of our product. It's a very safe system that's monitored 24/7, and meets all federal codes and regulations as far as safety goes. Not only that, in our package that we have submitted, this has been through emergency management, this has been through the local fire department and fire chiefs, and all of them have put together a package called a fire safety analysis. And again, as Rico had said, we did that, we actually did that before we even went to the board in January. And we met Chief Larson here. That has been our primary, when we go into a community, which we started with in January of last year and gave to you as a board, was safety. And we have all of the equipment required to make sure we monitor this product. I think Rico did an introduction to our company. The rest of this presentation is about what tonight is about, which is two things. One, to submit our application to you, and that has been done, and I believe you all have copies. Okay, this is our application. And tonight, all I'm going to do is go through very quickly what's included in this, because we'd be here a long time if I went through every page. And that will start the process. And the only real action required after this meeting is that, is that I believe there's a notice of intent, I think Rick's gonna take care of that afterwards, is that true, Rick? A notice of intent for the secret determination.
Yes.
So again, this is not to be significantly detailed, this is to go through what's in your application, and I will highlight different things. So the scope of the project hasn't changed. We plan on putting 12 electrically-powered compressors plus one reserve, seven filling dispensers, various appurtenances and safety equipment, and leased office space that we're already in in Fenton. The trucks will utilize existing driveways, traverse on existing roadways. Operations will occur 24/7, and over an annual basis, it's about 50 trucks a day. That is the scope of our permanent application to your people. To the town. Our application includes a development permit for the fill, a fire protection permit, application for area variance, floodplain development permit application, a request for zoning verification to the building inspector, an executive summary to the environmental assessment pool, full environmental assessment form part one, project and setting, and then a significant number of plans as listed. Again, this is all in your book. In this package that we've submitted, we have done a traffic report. It was done by a third party, so there are no biases. The proposed trucking terminal will be a minimal traffic generator and doesn't warrant a traffic study nor does it require mitigation. There are no traffic operational concerns, again, from a third-party expert. Again, I'm not here to... We have done geotechnical reports. We have done geotechnical engineering reports to include analysis, and again, done by a third party. All of our floodplain analysis is also done, and all of the reports are included in our submission. Everything required by law. Neither agency, as far as wetlands go, neither agency has any problems with regulated freshwater wetlands. Officer Parks and Recreation, this is not our comment. The projects will have no impact on archaeological or historic resources. Electrical lighting plans have all been done and meet code. We've done a noise study, performed again by a third party. The project will not raise overall background noise by a perceptible amount. Again, I've talked a little bit about the fire safety analysis. We have hundreds of hours with emergency responders and firefighters. And Chief Larson has actually published an affidavit that's part of the package. Air quality report, again, we've done the report. New York State does not require an air permit for construction or operations of this facility. New York State has confirmed that. The last bullet on this slide, the Broom County, the 239 comments that were published, 30 or 40-page document, those are included as part of our study and will be updated as part of this permanent application process to include a totally new 239 application. The last thing I have aboard is this, something I'm just gonna read from. And I'm gonna need some light. More glasses. We at NG Advantage appreciate the opportunity to come before you to present this project for your consideration. We feel it's important you know that all of NG Advantage appreciates your time, your commitment, and your dedication to this community. Chief, your words were heartfelt, I understand. Most of us at NG Advantage have sat on your side of the table. Most of it. Your efforts do not go unrecognized by any of us. If any, we applaud your sacrifice and fortitude to better the town of Fenton. We will do whatever we do we can to assist your planning board decisions and hopefully make you comfortable with your decisions. Furthermore, we understand that there has been a significant amount of bullying and fear-mongering directed towards you, and in some cases, towards your families. This is wrong, this is wrong, and we apologize. As you have, we will continue to take the high ground and not be part of those proceedings. As you know, the presentation today is almost totally redundant to what we have presented to this board on three officially noted and openly conducted planning meetings in the past. You have seen basically all of it before, and your previous decision based on the facts was a good one. The judge's decision that brought us back here, the judge's decision that brought us back here was not indicative of a bad project or that the project should not be built. To the contrary, his decision only highlighted the lack of a documented process. There were no bad decisions, only decisions that were not on the record or we made some mistakes. We will ensure that we're not in the same position this time as we go through this process. Once again, just as we've talked on three different occasions, this is a very, very good project, a very, very safe project that meets all local, county, state, and federal requirements and regulations. The facts will bear this out in the next couple of months. We continue to applaud your patience and your resolve, and thank you very much.
Board members, do you have any questions for NG Advantage?
No, no, it's time.
I have a few. In this particular project, it's classified as a freight or trucking terminal. In this project, it's classified as a freight or trucking terminal. I know you have a facility in Milton, Vermont. What is the zoning that that particular facility is located in, and what is that classified in in Milton, Vermont?
I can't give you a top-of-my-head. And I can't tell you if it's zoning, it's industrial.
Listen up. Second question. In the traffic study, it talked about off-peak and peak times for the truck traffic. Off-peak, which is the slow times, summer months, you're looking at roughly 50 trucks per day, which then divides down to roughly two trucks per hour coming and going. On-peak, during your winter months, you're looking at a total of, 125 trucks per day, which equates to five trucks per hour coming and going. And these are on trips, so two and out. Here's a question. Are these realistic numbers, or are these conservative estimates once the station gets going?
I can answer that one. We have a permit here for a max build-out. As you knew, we are only gonna put in three or four of the compressors up front, and then we ask for the total of 13 in our permit application, right? This is for full build-out, and this is the capability of the system. So the only way there can be more trucks than that is if in fact we expanded the system beyond what's in the permit.
So that's for four compressors, the 50 trucks is for four compressors?
No, the 50, the 50 and the 125 is peak demand at full build-out. Which is the capability of 12 compressors.
Can you elaborate, especially on the emergency safety plan that was submitted? There are two separate definitions for incidents. One's a controlled, one is an uncontrolled emergency. Can you elaborate as to what those are, and how are they responded to?
Give me the context, I'm sure I'll read it.
Section, please, section O. Natural gas trucking terminal emergency response plan. And I am looking at, if you could briefly elaborate on an uncontrolled emergency versus a controlled emergency?
I'm not the talker, nor did I go through this, this is the safety officer, the chief. It's a required paragraph in, those are required paragraphs of the emergency response plan. It's like any incident that you go to, the incident commander will make a decision on whether they can protect certain things and then attack those things. So they control, uncontrolled would be, we're gonna back off, we're gonna let, for instance, in a fire, an adjacent building burn. It's when they don't feel it's safe to control, that's the only way I can explain it.
Can I add you a part of that?
Sure.
Okay, so if you don't know me, I'm Rick Larson, Health Trust Fire Chief there. We talked about going in, setting up at about 330 feet, and that's how we start our detections on almost all of that. So either way, that's kind of our starting guide point. Comes out in the emergency response guides. Okay, I know there's been misinformation put out about the emergency response guides that we have to follow them. And right here on the front of the book in 2016 says it's a guidebook intended for use by first responders. So like I say, we're really gonna go in, set up 360 feet away, start the monitoring, start checking out before we advance any further in or out. I have met with the school we're talking about, because I know that seems to be a concern. I look at it like this, if you took a helium balloon down to their ground out here and let it go, can you get it to land in the schoolyard? Probably not, okay? But I've talked to the school about them sheltering in place, okay? For as far as the school, they have put extra methane infrared detectors up there for us so that we can see if anything is leaving their property before we ever get there. And that can change our decisions as to how we approach that.
So in a worst-case scenario environment, where evacuations may have to take place, what is an estimated radius for evacuation, again, in a worst-case scenario?
Which way's the wind blowing, and what's everything going on there? What time of day is it? That's the problem, okay? I applaud John and part of what he was saying, because the fire department shows up for anything and has to take care of it. As far as having a real answer for that, what are you talking, worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario is if the wind is blowing towards Port Dickinson Alimentary, that's worst-case scenario.
Is it venting from a trailer?
Venting from the compressor.
Okay, it's still natural gas which is gonna do what?
It's gonna go up.
It's gonna go up, it's gonna dissipate, and then it's gonna... It's going to go up, it's going to dissipate, and then it's going to be non-harmful. If you walk outside and look, I don't see flames up there fourteen, fifteen feet high where you might get into that part of the scenario. After that, it's going to dissipate mixed with the air. I think, you know, as far as I've...
So the wind is blowing west to east, it's blowing up indirectly into the rest?
EPA uses, in emergency response, uses a guidebook called Aloha. It's a weather monitoring, it's an air monitoring computer model. And with ten to fifteen mile-per-hour winds and a leak from a one-inch hose, pipe, or fitting from a trailer, you cannot get the flammable ranges of the product to leave our property perimeter.
So is nobody going to answer the question? So in a worst-case scenario, would you have to evacuate a mile?
No.
I could never see, honestly, where you would evacuate a square mile. The odor first of all.
Action is between board and NG.
And honestly, you know, there's other things in the area that concern me a lot worse than this does. We have LP trucks running up and down that service road all the time with propane. That's a bigger concern to me than any part of the natural gas.
Mr. Larson is not the board or NG, but he has submitted information into this application.
I'm just going off what Mr. Larson just said. And I can absolutely recognize that there are a lot of other tractor-trailers hauling, you know, compressed natural gas, other hazardous materials. We even have buses in the Schenandoval Valley fleet that run on propane. So yes, I recognize all of that. I just wanted to get an inkling of what does that plan look like? Because there's a lot of concerns in regards to safety, traffic pattern, noise, lighting, just to name a few. I'm trying to get to the solutions of those concerns so that it's a comfortable decision to make when it comes to that point.
I've also talked to the chief up there in Milton, away from everybody, and they've never shut down their interstate, which is relatively distant to what ours is. Theirs might be a few feet farther, stuff like that. They have did a couple of the incidents up there. They've had three out of... And these are older numbers from a while ago. They gave me thirty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-one loads. They had three. And they have never shut the interstate down up there. They have a building that's three hundred and thirty feet away, and he says they're really going to stop evacuating that one because they have not had any real issues outside of their property.
Okay. Let's keep this between the board and NG.
Hold on, hold on.
We can certainly bring you information on all of that.
If you would, please bring it all. Jerry, I've asked you this question before, so I know the response, but I want to put it out there. Can you name any incidents that have occurred at either of the facilities that is operated by NG Advantage? And what does that look like? What were the responses to that?
And again, the last time I was... The last time we've talked about this, we want to make sure we're specific, right? There are truck incidents that happen, our equipment that could be on the road, right? And we've had six, four, seven, I'll call those accidents, right? Trucks did an accident. At no time were they... Any of those six or seven accidents, only one where one of our trucks left the road. At no time were they ever... And were they compressed natural gas incidents. They were only... Six of them were lighter vendor vendors. And the other one, the truck went into a ditch. The truck got there, pulled it back on the road. They got a new truck because the truck was damaged, but the trailer was still used to the customer, certified as it. So from a road perspective, we in NG Advantage have never had a release of natural gas. Last year, we did thirteen thousand loads. So that's a lot of miles on the road. We have not had a single release of natural gas. As far as incidents, yes, we have had, I may be wrong, four? Three? Three incidents over five years. And again, that's what Chief Larson was talking about, he talked to the Milton Fire Chief. And again, when we first got there, this is a brand-new industry. When we got there, we went in, before we even built the facility, and talked to the chief and said, here's what we're doing, we want to work with you, not against you, and trying to make sure we're doing the right things. And we trained their entire fire department on two or three occasions before we even pushed the compressor to understand the things that could happen. Primarily, people talk about the gases underground in the pipeline, we take it out and compress it. If the compressor's fault, there are automatic shutdowns. So the compressors themselves have open safety mechanisms, and I don't think anywhere in this industry, and we've got competitors, that ever there's been a problem with the compressors, from pipelines to compressors. The only issues we've ever had in Milton were with the trailers. And on the first three occasions, those three occasions, all three of them were factory defects on the trailers that the deliverer of the trailer, the seller of the trailer, took total responsibility for. And yes, they vented, and we had conversations, should we shut down the interstate? Which is again, as the chief said, equal distance from eighty-eight to this particular facility. And at no time did they ever do that. There was a building, because it was branded to us and to them, to this fire department, that they evacuated on all three of those occasions. And they were evacuated for a total of forty-five minutes on each occasion, maybe an hour. When a trailer vents, the contents go to the atmosphere. It is not ignitable until it's a hundred and sixty feet in the air. And on all three occasions, we watched it go, and it drained out in about forty-five minutes, depending on how much gas is in the trailer. We then walked through, again, no problems, there was evacuation. We set up, the chief, the incident commander sets up an evacuation zone, of which there was one building. As Jerry would say, if you look at our Milton facility in comparison to the Fenton facility, which we do, there would be no other evacuations on that facility except the building that we occupy. There would, again... Now, an incident commander, Jason, can come in and say, I want to stop the interstate, I want to evacuate the park, I want to evacuate the new Vinghamton Creek ass facility. In our current experience, that would not be necessary. And a fire chief, the incident commander at the point, would not do that.
How does your facility differ from that of, let's say, XNG down in Pennsylvania?
The biggest significant difference from an environmental perspective is we're going to use, at a higher cost of operating, electric compressors. So we do not have emissions, future emissions, as they do. We don't have the noise that they do. And again, it's more expensive for us to do that. And not only that, we are insulating these compressors even more so our sound... Again, we didn't make these numbers up, they went out and did a sound test. They went onto Port Dickinson's park property. They went up near the interstate. And truthfully, the background of the interstate is a lot louder than our compressors are. It wasn't a surprise, the noise that came in, which is in your package, was not a surprise that the noise would not be discernible. And surely would not be a help. As we've said before, when our compressors are on, up in Milton, we have ten now, right? Ten compressors, all ordering at the same time. OSHA, which we've had come in and do our inspection, does not require hearing protection for our employees inside the compressor area. That should tell everybody that there's not a whole lot of noise there. If you don't need OSHA standards, we're taking care of people.
I know you guys have done some due diligence in regards to reaching out to local responders from county emergency services, fire department. Can you speak about what the dialogue looks like in regards to the Schenandoval Valley School District?
That one's going to be a difficult one to answer only because there was a lawsuit. And that's not me, we get gag orders whenever lawyers start talking, whether that's right law or a difference, it's not a safety issue. We took the judge's decision. And again, if anybody read that decision, it's how I characterize it, is the way it was characterized. The judge had a cool anticipation when he ruled that we were going to be back here like we are today, looking to clean up our paperwork now more than anything. There are lots of other issues, and I'm denying that you as a board and we have to talk to you. But the fact of the matter is, is we're submitting our application, identical to what we submitted basically nine or ten months ago, and not a lot has changed.
The reason why I asked that question is in the report to the two thirty-nine review, it states that NG Advantage presented a number of plans to the school, including a proposal to not operate trucks both eastbound on the West Service Road for an hour in the morning, because that timeframe is determined, and an hour in the afternoon to avoid school buses. The school board refused to even consider that offer and a number of others. I sit on that school board. I don't recall any of these particular plans being outlaid to me or the board. And nor is it the board's objection that it is a natural gas issue. It's more of a safety issue, and it's inverted in that response.
Okay, this, those comments were part of our two thirty-nine. And when we had those, prior to the two thirty-nine comments, we asked for... We understood that Superintendent Gill had some issues, and we met with him on two occasions. When we met with him on two occasions, the next action came out. So maybe we're wrong in calling it the school board, we just need to point somebody out. We talked to schools this week.
Well, during the lawsuit itself, we did make a proposal to the board. I think it was, was it the board? No, to the attorney, it was represented by the school board, in which we offered that up in writing, we also offered up reducing our speed, we offered up to conduct additional traffic studies. In addition to that, we also offered to replace their school buses with CNG fuel buses that we would pay. We would also, we would also pay for the fuel flow buses for the life we have for that period of time of the buses, I think it was for five years or possibly longer. In addition to that, we also offered to provide scholarships to STEM students. So we would provide, I think it was three scholarships for high school students going into the STEM program in college. We also offered to provide, and we paid for, the robotics club in the elementary school. In addition to that, we also have already paid for, and it takes place, I think it's next week, and we're funding the vocational school, I think it was in Onana. But we're also sponsoring the vocational school for training purposes. And along with providing shadowing for any of these students, whether it be on the professional side or on the skill side, you know, on our site to provide some hands-on training. So those are all things which we offer, and that was not exempt. Along with paying for the attorney fees that cost the town to sue itself.
We will re-very...
So... I ended up recusing myself from any of those proceedings with the lawsuit, yard seventy-eight. But I was not privy to that executive content. However, now that the lawsuit has come through and has been a decision, I would like, if Dave Gill is in the audience and his representation, to elaborate on those offers if any were made, just so I'm clear and I'm not misspeak. Is Dave Gill in the audience?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. You need to come this way, I cannot hear you.
I'm sure, I'm not sure what I'm responding to. When you first mentioned that, we did have two initial meetings. The first initial meeting was just to figure out who the hell you were, because we didn't know anything about you. And again, we were told, you know, very quickly that you were coming into town. So that first initial meeting, I feel, was really about who you are and what it is that you wanted to bring to West Service Road. So that needs to be very clear. Meeting number two, which again, came the day that you were originally approved, happened very quickly. So we just started the conversation about what the concerns are. And the concerns, as I go back to whoever said it at the beginning, remain the same. And I appreciate, this is not anti-anything, local jobs, natural gas. What it is, is just let's talk. We know that there's an issue with traffic. That's a given. So what are we doing about, before we keep going forward? We have concerns and we need the answers. And I think you need the answer before we go forward. So that's all we're asking for. You know, there is safety concerns. You know, you have the overpass right there, eighty-one to eighty-eight, the tell-me things rise. What does that mean when the wind's blowing? All that kind of stuff means something. The parks there, the trees. So when things are rising, going towards trees, and, you know, cars going on the overpass, what does that mean? That's the concern for safety. And again, what does that mean for evacuation? That's our most precious children. What does that mean? You can't just dismiss that as not a real concern. So that was problem number one. Problem number two, is it took me thirty minutes to go from Front Street to the high school, which is ridiculous, is what are we going to do about that? You know, we started the conversation about our problems, areas, and I appreciated that conversation. I said that to Steve and whoever else was there, I appreciated that. But then it was shut down, and we're voting yes for the approval. That's what we're trying to say, is let's have the conversation, let's have the solution so you can make an educated decision on how to go forward. So I don't know if that answered your question, Jason.
Yes.
As far as the lawsuit, again, you know, at that point, we didn't want to know about free anything. We didn't really want to know about gifts, and our concerns remain the same.
I have one more question, it's more of a curiosity. When you offered up the choppered bus to the Milton facility, how many individuals took you up on that offer to see that in action?
It was less than twenty, I don't know the example.
It was eleven.
It was eleven. Less than twenty, that's hard to tell.
Melody, how many people do we have here tonight? A rough number.
Hundred and sixty-four, cheers.
Hundred and sixty-four, that's bare minimum, eleven minus the seat. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Just to follow up to one of Jason's questions. Follow up to one of Jason's questions, you may have already answered it. But the traffic study, and so the area traffic findings, sort of reviewed by New York State DOT and the BMTS website, where they got the information from, traffic studies for that King of Worm intersection there. But I see a lot of these numbers, a lot of these traffic counts were taken as many as upwards of ten, twelve years ago. And I think you've already said that you have offered to do a new traffic study? Did I do that right?
Yeah, we're in the process, we just finished the counts.
You are in the process?
Yes, what date is data on that?
Yeah, I'd like to see some better numbers.
No historic numbers, just so you know, to develop history, to see what the changes are over time.
What question would relate to safety? And we talked to Jason about a new facility, so any issues at the point of delivery?
You know, we've never, we have shutdowns, and again, we have systems that think there's leaks. And there are leaks, I'm not denying that, you're dealing with, you know, thousands of feet of pipe. And there are canny leaks with unions and welds. The truth is, is that when it leaks, we have nothing detectors, and it shuts the system down, and we're immediately recognized. So to, again, answer your question, we have, including hospitals, which we have four, and other, we have an actual paper plant that our system sits about a hundred and fifty feet below a schoolyard. A hundred and fifty feet below the schoolyard. And it was allowed to be put there based on what Chief Larson was talking about. The truth is, is we've never evacuated one of our customer sites, don't have an evacuation at any of our customer sites.
Thank you. It was mentioned, it was mentioned earlier that the board this evening will take a look at an item. And what we will be taking a look at this evening is to be... at an item, and what we will be taking a look at this evening is the beginning of the state environmental quality review process. And if we look at the conclusion drawn by the judge, we are treating this, or, let me rephrase that, in the past, it was treated as an unlisted action in that state process. It will now be treated as a type one action with a coordinated review. What this means is, some part of your agency will take a lead role in the review process, but it will be coordinated with a variety of other agencies. Before the start of the meeting this evening, I was asked where we are in the process. When our board chair introduced this, we called it new business, this is a new start to the application process, it is a fresh start, it is day one. So as a result of what occurred before, that's pretty much in our past, and we are looking at this application with a fresh start today. There is, there are a variety of permits, there are a variety of applications, there are a variety of studies that will occur in the entire process. We talked a little bit about traffic here, I've shared with the applicant some concerns, that a couple of people have caught me out in the past at the end of meetings with regard to noise. And I myself asked the question of the applicant, if, in the, in the earlier process, again, that's behind us, but in that earlier process, I asked the applicant about the opportunity to increase the treatment of the compressors in the event that they were found to be bothersome. And it was shared this evening that that's going to be done without having to be asked to do it, we're going to cap that. Couple of people in meetings past have indicated to be questions or concerns, not associated specifically with the noise that comes from the compound, but with the noise that comes from the vehicles that are going to the facility and departing the facility. And recognize that there are certain times of the day when it might be a little bit more offensive than others, to have some truck starting from a dead stop and accelerating and walking through a variety of gears in the process of accelerating, and only to find that quarter mile down the road, there's a crossover, and there's a three-way stop, and that process starts over again. So these folks, that's been mentioned to them, they will be looking into that, comment was made earlier today about them causing their own drivers to reduce speed on that service road, where the outcomes of reducing that speed is, maybe they're spending their time on that service road in the first three or four gears, not the first five or six gears. That is being looked at, that additional noise component. Speaking of the state environmental quality review act, as I just shared a moment ago, an agency takes the lead in the process. What I'm going to put before the board this evening is a motion for the planning board of the Town of Fenton to take, or, I don't think the right words, indicate our intention to serve as the lead agency in the process. The way this works, the way this works is, I have identified fifteen agencies, I'm sorry, fifteen or fourteen agencies, that this intent document will be issued to. They include DEC, the Corps of Engineers, ours only Board of Appeals, because they will have some input here, State Office of Parks and Recreation, Bloom County Department of Health, Town Fenton Board, New York State Department of Transportation, Bloom County Police, BMTS, the Town of Dickinson, the Village of Port Dickinson, the Town of Shenandoah, and the Town's Conservation Advisory Committee. So, the motion this evening will be for, we get the process moving, indicating this board's intent to act as the agency. That, all those groups I just identified, will be notified again in ten, those folks have thirty days to indicate an objection or a concurrence. I'm not going to predict the outcome, but that's the way the process works. So what I intend to do now is put forward a motion, and I agree the motion, allow. I motion by, and I will make that motion myself, ultimately looking for a second, the following resolution is adopted by the planning board of the Town of Fenton, New York. Whereas the planning board of the Town of Fenton is considering an application for site plan review and development permits pursuant to chapters fifty-seven, seventy-eight, eighty-one, and one fifty of the Town of Fenton Code for natural, I'm sorry, for MG Advantage LLC, where truck term proposed relocated at sixty-five, sixty-nine, and ninety-three West Service Road, also known as seventy-one West Service Road in the Town of Fenton, Bloom County, New York. And whereas pursuant to the notice in next year two, that copies have been noticed, it will be issued to this agency, that I'll be working on later to leave. In accordance with provisions of six, New York State, CRR, Cart six seventeen, the planning board of the Town of Fenton intends to serve as lead agency for the secret review process, I'm sorry, for the secret review of this type one action, for the requested site plan review and development permits, and in this capacity will determine that the proposed action will have a significant effect on the department. And whereas the lead agency will undertake a coordinated review of the action, now therefore, via these files of the planning board of the Town of Fenton hereby indicates its intention to serve as lead agency for the secret, for the coordinated review of this type one action, and will circulate the lead agency notice, copies of the application, and supporting materials to all involved agencies. Those agencies shall have thirty days from the mail of the lead agency notice to challenge the planning board's lead agency designation. So that's the motion I put forward.
Okay, do I hear a second? I need a second to the motion.
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
If it was approved, or more than approved, to possibly be other agencies, then we would be the lead agency.
If there is no objection within that criteria, then we would take that, take that roll on yes.
Jason. Is it a common practice for the planning board to be considered lead agency, is this something that generally occurs, such as in the Town of Shenandoah, Town of Dickinson, is that a common practice?
It is typical.
Approving this lead agency motion does not automatically approve the project, it just begins the review process yet again, since eventually the reset button has been pushed.
Right.
I think it's only fair to do that, just to go through the process.
Okay, the board is going, okay, I'll need call roll.
Mr. Randall?
No.
Is that dark, Jason? Who's the hot pick?
As I said before, it's only fair to go through the process.
I think so.
I will say aye, I think it's fair to go through the process.
(inaudible).
Aye.
Where's the rest of the board? In last, we're sorry. We have Kyo, no Mullins. Where's Kyo and Mullins?
All right.
One, one last item, I understand, I understand that Shenandoah Valley Schools have some, I understand that Shenandoah Valley School has some material they would like to present to the board.
All right, the next planning board meeting will be hollowing in on October thirty-first.
So, so in that, we are leading.
It didn't pass, it didn't pass, apparently they need the full board to vote.